Visiting it, um, yeah, it's a really great, great time. And the configuration and the work staff did go ahead and, you know, put together a bunch of different opinions and come up with something that people really like from both and not just saying, oh, this option has the most. So that's what we're going to go with like now. Let's, let's figure out how to pull it all together. And I think that so this has just been really well done. And I, again, I really look forward to going and checking it out when it's built. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. And I'll be supporting this motion.
Sorry, Mayor, can I just interject for one brief moment?
Yeah.
I'm not entirely sure what happened, but our Zoom live stream to YouTube stopped. People watching on YouTube lost the ability to watch. It has been restarted. So if they're, so it's going on the city clerk, Sunnyvale City Clerk YouTube channel, but it's a different link because we can only livestream to something once. We'll work with staff tomorrow to figure out what might have caused that to stop. Because in Zoom, it looks like we were livestreaming the whole time.
Okay. But we fixed that problem.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll be supporting this motion definitely, you know. One of the things that we did from a council standpoint is we removed from our, from our strategic, strategic priorities, adding open space. That being said, it's still a priority from a city standpoint. You know, I think adding another park, which we continue to do every other year or so is actually a very positive thing. And I just want to thank Councilmember Mellinger for, for bringing up bikes as well as benches. You know, I think the more of that we have at each of the parks and whether or not that needs to be a standard checklist from a policy standpoint. I would have appreciated seeing where, you know, additional benches, but where the bike racks are going to be as well as where the water, you know, conceivably the water, the, the fountain or the, the water fill-up section is within, within the park. As far as removing the exercise equipment, I was a little disheartened about that. You know, I think if you look at a lot of our parks were designed before the modern exercise equipment was put in place. So what you're looking at at Moecma Park, I think is a great use of, of basically adult, at the end of the day, exercise equipment that is, doesn't make noise, but it's basically just some, a place within the park for people to exercise. And we focused on a tot lot here and we focused on kind of a kid's playground. It's always good to focus on adults also. So I will be supporting this motion, but I wish that had stayed there. And I appreciate the addition of the themes, you know, I think staff has already been looking at that and figuring out what we need to do as far as not losing track of the heritage of the city and making sure that, you know, the corn palace, whether or not that's farm equipment or corn itself is implemented into, into the artwork, especially the playground as far as this park is concerned. I understand that, you know, many of the residents had issues concerning privacy. And, and ultimately, you know, this is meeting what, what is being done within other parks around the city. That being said, you know, it's like the, the six-foot fence that from a privacy standpoint, for backyard privacy is a standard within the city. And then whether or not you have a separate fence along the front, front, uh, front yard is a whole other thing, but you know, that can be dealt with through the planning staff. So, so, you know, I understand there's questions about privacy, but we have lots of parks, especially smaller parks, that are intermingled amongst, amongst neighborhoods. And so, you know, it's, it's difficult for people to, you know, and many people worry about that ongoing privacy. But ultimately, I think what this design is and what we've come up with is it works with the neighborhood, whether or not it attracts people. This will mainly be a park people walk to and, and I look forward to, you know, seeing it final, finally come to completion. I appreciate staffs, you know, working so hard with, with residents and getting feedback. And I think, you know, what we've come up here with is, is a great design. So thank you for all that hard work. With that, City Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
First up, Councilmember Sisneros, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Srinivasan?
Yes.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Sal?
Yes.
Councilmember Melton?
Ultra enthusiastic, yes.
The motion as amended passes 6-0 with Vice Mayor Dean absent.
Thank you. And at this point, we'll take a short recess. City Clerk, we'll do a five-minute recess and come back at 9:18. Thank you. Let's go ahead and reconvene. Our next item is item 23-1022, Appeal of Laborers, Laborers International Union of North America, Local Union Number 270, of the Planning Commission Decision Approving Related Applications on a 5.82-acre site located 1150 through 1170 Kafer Road. Before I begin move on, Councilmember Sisneros has a comment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And though I am not legally required to recuse myself from this item, out of an abundance of respect and caution around potential perceived conflicts of interest due to this item involving the property owner for the apartment that I currently lease, I will not be participating in this item and will instead leave council chambers and leave it to my able colleagues here to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Is there a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is George Schroeder, Principal Planner, and I'm going to be presenting the, the appeal tonight for 1150 and 1170 Kafer Road. So to give some background on the project, this is a special development permit and tentative parcel map to construct a new 225-unit apartment building consisting of eight stories. This includes 44 total units of low-income units. Within the first three levels of the building are a parking structure that's integrated within the apartment building. And this, this site would share parking with some existing offices to remain on site. So the offices would use the first two levels and residential would, would have some parking on the third level and another two levels as well. The tentative parcel map is to relocate the existing lot line to create one lot each for each type of land use. And the project is subject to some of the state housing laws, Housing Committee Act, SP 330, and the density bonus law. This shows an aerial of the site area. This is near Kafer Road and Lawrence Expressway. And the site is at the, the southwest corner of Kafer Road and San Zino Way. And San Zino Way is a frontage road along Lawrence Expressway. This is in the Lawrence Station area plan and it's right near the border with City of Santa Clara. And as you can see, we've, we've had several recent approvals for housing projects in the Lawrence Station area plan, including two from last week, 1154 and 1170 Sonora Court. This is the overall site plan. So on the, the top part of the, the site, those are the existing offices that will remain as part of this project. And the apartments are proposed in the current surface parking lot behind those office buildings. And a new horizontal lot line will be placed in between the two. The project is proposing a couple of components from the Lawrence Station Sense of Place Plan. This includes a new large gateway sign at the corner that will announce entry into the plan area, clearly identify the Sunnyvale portion of, of the plan area, and also include a new shared use path that would link up to the proper apartment property to the west, the Savoy Apartments. And that will essentially provide a shortcut for pedestrians and bicyclists to have quicker access to Lawrence Caltrain Station. And this is a large view of the apartment site. So San Zino Way is on the right side and that's where residents would mainly access the, the parking garage that goes up to the second level. There would be pedestrian access all around the, the building, leading to the, the public sidewalk and also the secondary shared use path, which is publicly accessible. Offices, office users would access the, the site through another driveway on San Zino or through Kafer Road. And also as part of the project, new trash enclosure is going to be built for the offices as well to replace a couple of existing and then bring it up to current standards. Here is a rendering of the proposed apartment building. So it is, it is, it does draw inspiration from the industrial history of Sunnyvale. It has kind of a warehouse look to it. It, it has a rectangular, rectangular building form that's timeless in nature. It has a well-defined base, top and middle portion of the building with a combination of natural warm and dark colors. Brick veneer is used significantly throughout the, the project, which clouds a building and it's interspersed with cement and metal panels, stucco walls. And then this is the, the view from the southern part near the border with neighboring property to the south. This, this shows the, the shared use path on the left side. And the architectural theme is, is carried throughout on all four sides with, you know, to make sure there's 360-degree architecture integrity. And then there's two large stepbacks on the south side, on the, the left side of this, this rendering. And this is for the, the resident amenity spaces, open space areas, and it, it creates a large stepback that helps to soften the mass of the building. And then the parking structure is on the first three levels. You can see that on the left side is clad with brick material, green screens that help to screen, screen vehicles that are in that parking structure. So the, the Plan Commission considered this, this project on October 9th and voted 7 to 0 to approve the, the special development permit tentative parcel map, find that the project is consistent with the recent LSAP EIRs that were done in 2016 originally and 2021 for the increased housing. And there, there were some revisions to the recommended conditions of approval. These are currently reflected in Attachment 4 for tonight's hearing. And then on October 17th, the city received an appeal from the Laborers International Union of North America, Local Union Number 270, known as LIUNA. Their basis of appeal is that the city did not evaluate indoor air emissions of formaldehyde within the interior construction with specifically of the wood products used in construction. And that presence of high levels of formaldehyde is new information that warrants additional environmental review. The appellant is claiming that a subsequent EIR, Environmental Impact Report, must be prepared and recirculated prior to a decision. And that the city also adopt a statement of overriding considerations prior to project approval. So staff reviewed the appeal with, with its environmental consultant, Ascend Environmental. Our response is that the city is allowed to accept conclusions by its own experts. That's established by CEQA precedent. And in disagreement amongst experts is not a reason to prepare additional environmental review or recirculate environmental documents. The project is required to comply with all applicable regulatory requirements related to formaldehyde exposure. This includes the California Air Resources Board or CARB standards that require Phase II products that have much less formaldehyde than other wood products that were used in the past. Also, the current building code requires air filtration systems, which will also help to reduce exposure. The appellant had, had its own consultant or an indoor air quality consultant, justify its statements and use some studies in their basis for appeal. But the, the studies were referenced, were, were completed prior to these current state standards being to effect. The, the, the appellant's studies are also speculative in their data points. You know, for instance, we don't know how many, how future residents would furnish their homes or ventilate their windows, the number of hours they would spend indoors. So it's, it's hard to know how much exposure they would experience. Also, the project does not exacerbate existing adverse conditions. CEQA is really focusing on the project's impacts to the environment, not, not the environment's effects on the users of the project. That's, that's not required to be analyzed under CEQA. Also, air quality was analyzed as part of the, the CEQA checklist that was done as part of the project. It, it confirms that the project is within the allowable emissions established by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. So therefore, we find there's no significant new information that warrants environmental review or recirculation of environmental documents. So the council can consider these three alternatives, which is to deny the appeal and affirm the Plan Commission's decision to approve the, the project. And then the same with, with modifications. Or grant the appeal and deny the special development permit tentative parcel map. And, and staff recommends alternative one, which is to deny the appeal and affirm the Plan Commission's approval of the CEQA determination and special development permit tentative parcel map. And then just an update, since the staff report production, we did receive an email today from the appellant with a rebuttal letter to, to staff's response. We also received another letter from the, the applicant in support of the project. And that concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions.
Thank you very much. First up is Councilmember Melton.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Klein. I have a question for the Office of City Attorney. So Mr. Nagel and Rebecca, it's nice to see you here as well. John, this is just a typical rules of the road question that I like to ask when up here on the dais, we have something other than seven council members. So if I'm counting noses, I see five council members here right now with Councilmember Sisneros recused and Vice Mayor Dean absent. And some potential actions in front of us would be a CEQA thing, a special development permit thing, and a tentative parcel map thing. And the question is, if council is of a mind to move any of those across the finish line, and I have no idea what's going to happen at the public hearing, do we need three yes votes, four yes votes? Or how many yes votes are required to get those across the finish line?
In, in this case, since Councilmember Sisneros is essentially abstaining to participate, she counts towards the quorum. And there's a quorum even without her presence, but her, she wouldn't count towards a vote. So that would mean for the appeal to be upheld or denied, there would have to be a majority of the council that's hearing the appeal. So that's five. And so it would take three votes for the council to either uphold or to deny the appeal.
Okay. And sometimes, not tonight, but sometimes the answer is four yes votes are required. But that's if like we're doing like an ordinance or something where it's specified in the charter or rules of the road that it requires four yes votes, regardless of the number of council members on the dais. That's not what's happening here tonight, is that correct?
That is correct. Generally, it's general plans, specific plans, that's by state law. Introduction of an ordinance and adopting a resolution regarding the expenditure of funds. I think that's all of it. There may be another one that I've forgotten, but that's, none of those are dealing with an appeal.
That's great, City Attorney. Thank you very much. And I'll just turn my attention over to Community Development Department. George, that was a great presentation. I, I don't have any questions for you. We're seeing a lot of you in council chambers these days recently. So another great job and presentation. Nice to see you here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Mellinger?
Thank you very much. I have a few questions. How does the shared path interact with the Caltrain station path that we approved last week? Does it interact with the, I'm trying to remember in my mind the layout of that path. Are these going to connect in some way? They simply just complementary? They wouldn't be able to connect in some way?
No, they would not connect. They're, they're separate paths. So this, this path would really be benefiting the residents of this project and then the apartments next door to the west that would provide a more direct path to San Zino Way, which links up with Lawrence Station. But the other path you're referencing is on Sonora Court and that's just a north-south route that links Sonora to the station.
And my understanding is that path, they were also working with the Savoy on that path?
They, they might have been, but not necessarily because it doesn't link with the Savoy site.
Okay. Cool. Next question. The formaldehyde issue. I saw one of my colleagues asked a question about this. And this is something that's been a little confusing to me as well. Wouldn't this in theory apply to just about every construction project in the city?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. How much did the appellant's pay to file this appeal? May I ask that?
I, I think our appeal fee is, is somewhere between $250 to $75, a little less than 300.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Sal?
Hi, thank you for the work you've done on this. One of my Monday morning questions was what analysis has been done to determine that this project emissions would not exceed Bay Area Air Quality Management District thresholds? And you pointed me to where it was found. But I was wondering if you could just elaborate more on that analysis for the public.
Yes, thank you, council member. For that question, I'd like to defer to one of our consultants that are on the line. Yes, here's Pat Angel with Ascent.
Good evening, council. I believe your question was what to elaborate on the air quality analysis that was done for this specific project, correct?
Correct.
Okay. First, to take a step backwards, the entirety of all of the development that's allowed under the Lawrence Station area plan was evaluated and its original EIR and its subsequent EIR that was prepared as part of the expansion of residential development intensities in the plan area. So there's kind of an overall cumulative analysis done on the entirety of the plan area. In addition to that, for this project, you'll find in the air quality analysis of the checklist, some air quality modeling was done for this specific project in isolation, asking the question, if you were just to evaluate this project in isolation, would it exceed any of the air district's thresholds? And there are two tables. And there are two tables in the air quality section that address that item. I'm sorry, I don't, let me.
I think it's, staff told me it was attachment five and it was page forty-five.
Correct. There are two, there are two tables. Actually, there's three tables. There's a table three in in the checklist itself, which is a part of your attachment, is table three, excuse me, four point three dash four, four point three dash five and four point three dash six, and all address air quality impacts of this project in isolation as well as cumulatively for both criteria emissions and toxic air contaminant exposure. And identifies we looked at this project in just simple isolation that it does not exceed any of the air district's thresholds.
Okay, and that's the normal way in which you evaluate new developments, correct?
Correct. You compare it against the air district's thresholds, even though it was programmatically evaluated in in the E I R. We went the extra step and looked at it in just simple isolation.
Okay, thank you. And then we also got a letter from a neighbor in business that was asking about construction and how the neighbors will be able to be informed of the construction. So in your Monday morning responses, you gave many thorough answers to that. But I was wondering if you could just briefly, high level, give a overview of what this development would do so that the neighbors would be feel comfortable with what's going to happen.
Yes, so as part of this this project's conditions of approval, one of the requirements is to prepare a detailed construction management plan that includes measures to notify neighbors when construction is occurring and when to expect any road closures. There's also a disturbance coordinator that needs to be identified should there be any complaints, so there's someone on site to address those. And then also, all construction routes will need to be reviewed by our Public Works Department. That's part of the construction management plan as well, just to make sure that traffic is flowing in the right direction. It avoids residential areas to the extent possible. So those are usually the the main measures that we use.
My last question is about traffic impacts. What are your thoughts about traffic impacts when this development is done? Is your thinking about what analysis will be done or has been done or your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so this project is exempt from traffic studies. It's exempt from the V M T, a vehicle miles travel analysis per the the council policy, just given its its location to the the station. It's also exempt from a local transportation analysis because it has lower trip counts. So it didn't exceed the the thresholds for a detailed traffic study. But do you want to note that another recent traffic study in this area for the the Sonora Court projects, that did account for this this project's traffic in in that study? And that one required a traffic study because of the office use that that generated more more vehicle trips.
Okay, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next is Councilmember Shree Bhavan.
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent presentation. Thank you very much. You answered one of my questions, which was related to formaldehyde. Councilmember Mellinger asked that that is, it can be appealed, every construction can be appealed because of the construction material. But the question I have is slide number four. There is a lot line between the existing office buildings and then the new construction, right? And then if we go to the next slide, slide five, sorry, David. There is the office garage entry. How does that work? That is, from Kifer, they are coming in. But then is there a passage from Kifer through these office buildings?
Yes, there is. So it's not really shown on on this this diagram, but Kifer is towards the top or to the north. And there is, there's a couple driveways on Kifer where office users could enter from there. They could also enter from another driveway on San Zino, which is just north of the residential entry. And they can legally access this site through shared access easements that will be done as part of, you know, prior to the building permit issuance, we'll work with the applicant's attorney to make sure there's proper access between both sites, should one of those be sold in the future. But yes, and then there's there's a parking management plan that also looks at the the shared parking details. But we've, you know, worked with the applicant beforehand to make sure that there's enough parking to accommodate demand.
Thank you. And then on the right-hand side of this slide, you have residential garage entry. If I remember correctly, you said that third level garage, third level is for residential parking. And then they could still use the first two depending on the timing. Is that correct?
Yes, so, you know, the third is is all residential. And on the the first and second, the office users will have access to that. And then there are some some residence spaces as well. Because when offices are not in use, such as the weekends, you know, there'll be more space for residents to park in those those spaces. And then with with the the property management, they would have to make sure that residents vacate the spaces, you know, before, you know, Monday morning to make sure that office users can park there as well.
Okay, those are my questions for now. I will wait for public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I had several questions. First, I want to disclose that I met with the applicant last week to learn more about the project. I also did a site visit over the weekend to just get a better feel for layout and, you know, how things relate to each other. So yeah, I had the question about, you know, it's like whether or not this appeal, the concept of the interior would would apply to basically every, you know, every residential, every office space from that standpoint. And, you know, your answer to Councilmember Mellinger was conceivably yes. But you also talked to, you know, in in the response to to our eight AM questions was that the California Air Resource Board Composite Wood Products Regulations around. And I I didn't know what Phase Two products are. And, you know, can you clarify that for me?
Yes, I'll I'll do my my best here, but let's see. So so these are related to like the the CARB regulation. And originally, it was adopted in two thousand and seven and had two phases of emission standards. So it, you know, phase one passed. Now we're in the phase two stage. And that requires all finished goods, such as flooring destined for sale or used in California, to be made using complying composite wood products. And then those became legal for sale as of two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, and then as far as the, you know, as far as reducing the amount of emissions, it's a mixture of ventilation. You know, the 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 standard ventilation that you would have in any residential or office building, and then conceivably the 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 control of formaldehyde within wood that's being sold within California.
Yes, that's correct. And then the current version of the building code now requires some more stringent air filtration systems, the MERV thirteen. And that that will help with with the ventilation. And then when this project comes through building permit stage, I, you know, it it could be another building code of that at that time has a more stringent standard. But as of now, you know, there are some better filtration systems required.
Thank you. That's appreciated. And then you said that the appellant had a rebuttal letter that was received today. Was that sent to council and I missed it and I haven't got through all my emails?
Yes, that was sent this afternoon.
Okay, and so can you give, I'm sure we'll hear from the appellant, but can you give a quick summary while I search out my emails?
It's it's essentially a disagreement among experts. You know, the the appellant is still claiming that the city needs to do an E I R for this project and evaluate formal formaldehyde even more.
Okay, appreciate it. And then as far as this project's concerned, part of it is way, so some of the some of the wayfinding is for the pathways is some of their points for the Lawrence Station Plan. Can you clarify what wayfinding will look like as far as this project is concerned?
Yeah, so these are identified in the Lawrence Station Sense of Place Plan. And probably the most notable is a large gateway sign that's going to be at the the corner that will be clearly visible from from Kifer Road and Lawrence. I believe this is about an eighteen-foot-tall pylon sign that has the Sunnyvale logo and it's announcing entry into Lawrence Station. So it's to help users have some some identity about the city and then also find the the Caltrain station better, because that's always been an issue with this particular Caltrain station. So that will be the main sign. And then there's a smaller sign that will be placed along San Zino near the the shared use path that will direct persons from the shared use path to get to the the station. And then also pedestrians on San Zino Way to get, you know, you're on the right path towards the station.
Okay, that's much appreciated. You know, it's it's trying to figure out how this, the overall Lawrence Station Plan finally takes shape. And we're seeing, you know, multiple projects kind of slowly moving forward since the since the plan was approved. As far as and kind of along that route, you know, and I asked this question at Monday Morning Questions, assuming that this is a project, the the appeal is not, is denied tonight. The two hundred and twenty-five units that are that are here, where does that stand for what has been entitled or built for the overall Lawrence Station Plan as it currently stands from a residential standpoint?
Yeah, so let me find the numbers real quick, but the the shorter answer is there'll be plenty of units remaining that are allowed within the the plan area. I believe it's, yeah, three, three thousand something. Today, we've we've had about a little less than two thousand units that have been approved or built or under construction. And then overall, there is about five thousand nine hundred and thirty-five units that are allowable within the plan area. So yes, it's it's three thousand. Let me find the number here. Yes, so we have a remaining balance of three thousand nine hundred and sixty-four units, should this be approved tonight.
Okay, much appro, much appreciated. You know, thank you for, and it's looking at, you know, what we've studied from from a plan standpoint and trying to see, you know, as we're slowly building out that plan, making sure that, you know, it's, for one thing, hopefully not immediately approved, but it's it's over a period of time as we, you know, build more housing, residential retail. So so glad to see that that plan is is moving forward. I see no further questions from council. So let me go ahead and open the public hearing. Members of public wishing to address council, please submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Raise your digital hand or dial star nine on your telephone now to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of public participating in person first, and then the city clerk will ask remote participants to unmute their microphones when it's their turn to address council. The appellant's will be given ten minutes at the beginning of the public hearing, divided amongst the the appellants who formally appealed the planning commission decision. And following the appellant's, the applicant is also provided ten minutes to address city council. At the end of the public hearing, the applicant will receive an additional five minutes, and the appellant's will also receive an additional five minutes following the applicant. First up, is there an appellant presentation?
Good evening. My name is Victoria Yum from the law firm Lazo Jury. I am here this evening on behalf of Appellant Laborers International Union of North America, Local Union Two Seventy, or LIUNA, and its members living and working in Sunnyvale. LIUNA respectfully requests that the city council grant its appeal and require city staff to prepare either a subsequent M N D or an E I R for the project prior to any approvals. As noted at the planning commission's public hearing for the project in October, LIUNA is not opposed to this project being built, but believes that full C Q A review is required to adequately analyze and mitigate the potential significant impacts to air quality and human health from the project's construction and operation. The city proposes to approve the project based on the two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty-one L S A P E I Rs. The project, however, has project-specific potentially significant impacts that should be analyzed and mitigated in a new C Q A document, including indoor air quality, cumulative air quality, and health risk impacts. First, the project will likely have new significant indoor air quality impacts that were not analyzed in the two thousand and sixteen or two thousand and twenty-one L S A P E I Rs. LIUNA's indoor air quality expert, Francis Offerman, concluded that the project's future residents would likely be exposed to formaldehyde from composite wood products used in building materials and furnishings far above C Q A significant thresholds. According to Mr. Offerman, these composite wood products are commonly found in residences and contain formaldehyde-based glues that off-gas formaldehyde over a very long time period. This is particularly concerning, given that formaldehyde is a known human carcinogenic. After reviewing the project, Mr. Offerman concluded that residents will be exposed to a cancer risk from formaldehyde of a hundred and twenty per million, even assuming that all building materials are compliant with CARB's airborne toxic control measure, which is twelve times higher than the Bay Area A Q M D's secret significance threshold for airborne cancer risk of ten per million. This impact was not analyzed in the prior E I Rs. Visible mitigation measures should be imposed for the project, such as requiring no added formaldehyde wood products, among other mitigation measures recommended by Mr. Offerman. Mr. Offerman's expert comments were submitted to the planning commission prior to the October public hearing on the project. LIUNA also submitted a rebuttal letter to the city council this afternoon that was prepared by Mr. Offerman. The letter responds to several assertions made by the city's environmental consultant in its November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three response to LIUNA's appeal. LIUNA did not have access to this response until last Thursday. Considering the city's response and critique of LIUNA's experts' comments, I want to clarify a few issues. First, with respect to the project's indoor air quality and health health risk impacts from formaldehyde, utilization of CARB's Phase Two Formaldehyde Airborne Toxic Control Measure materials will not ensure acceptable cancer risks with respect to formaldehyde emissions from from composite wood products. Additionally, the December twelfth, two thousand and sixteen EPA rule to reduce exposure to formaldehyde emissions from composite wood products that the city relies on is the same as the CARB Airborne Toxic Control Measure Regulations and does not ensure acceptable cancer risk with respect to formaldehyde emissions from composite wood products. Further, the city's reliance on the American Society of Heating and Air Conditioning Engineers' sixty-two point two ventilation and air filtration requirements in the state's Title Twenty-Four Building Code is also misplaced since it does not address formaldehyde emissions from composite wood products nor ensures acceptable cancer risk with respect to formaldehyde emissions from composite wood products. In addition, Mr. Offerman's rebuttal letter explains that even composite wood products manufactured with CARB-certified ultra-low emitting formaldehyde resins do not ensure that the indoor air will have concentrations of formaldehyde that meet cancer risks that substantially exceed ten per million. Only use of composite wood products made with no added formaldehyde resins can ensure that the cancer risk of ten per million is met. Regarding the city's argument that Mr. Offerman's calculations were based on a false and unrealistic assertion that future residents will likely be exposed to truly continual levels of off-gassed formaldehyde, Proposition sixty-five requires utilizing the assumption of a seventy-year lifetime, which covers all occupants, including those that for medical reasons live indoors continuously their entire lives. Lastly, as Mr. Offerman explains in his rebuttal, he is not recommending that the builders speculate on what and how much composite materials be used, but rather at the design stage to select composite wood materials based on the formaldehyde emission rates that manufacturers routinely conduct using the California Department of Health standard method for the testing and evaluation of V O C emissions for indoor sources using environmental chambers and use the procedure described in Mr. Offerman's comments as the, known as the preconstruction building material and furnishing formaldehyde emissions assessment to ensure that the building materials selected for the project achieve acceptable cancer risk for material offgassing of formaldehyde. As such, Mr. Offerman's expert analysis is substantial evidence of a new significant indoor air quality and health risk impact that requires full C Q A review. Additionally, the L S A P E I Rs admitted significant and unavoidable impacts on air quality and significant and unavoidable cumulative impacts on air quality and wastewater services. Because these impacts will remain significant and unavoidable, the project requires its own subsequent M N D or E I R. Courts have held that this is meant to ensure that the city goes on the record and explains specifically why they are approving the later project despite its significant unavoidable impacts. Given the substantial evidence that the project will result in significant environmental impacts not fully analyzed or mitigated in the prior EIRs, LIUNA respectfully requests that the city council require either a subsequent MND or an EIR be prepared for the project. That concludes my comments at this time. Thank you so much for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you. I see no questions from counsel. Let's move on to the applicant presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Klein and council members. I'm Jonathan Stone with Prometheus Real Estate Group. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you all for your time. Stated as our letter to counsel and staff that we supported or submitted earlier today, along with some of the recent outreach, we strongly support the Planning Commission unanimous approval in the subsequent staff report that's before you today recommending denial of the appeal. We very much look forward to delivering this transit-oriented development to bring much-needed housing to the city of Sunnyvale, including 225 apartments, 44 of those being affordable, as well as implementing the much-needed bicycle and pedestrian pathway that's been discussed thus far this evening, in line with the policies of the Lawrence Station area plan. And along with that, believe delivering much-needed and distinguished architectural design, which incorporates the retention of the existing mature redwood trees in the neighborhood. It's been a pleasure for us to work with staff in the city. The beginnings of our company originated here in 1968. We look forward to delivering this project and others in the future. Our team is here today, both in person and online, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the applicant? I'll raise a quick question. So part of the question, some of the rebuttal email that I skimmed through as I was going through, as the appellant was basically speaking, was raising questions about the CARB Phase II certified composite wood products and the use in your product, in the project. And so trying to get a better feel for your take on, you know, the usage of that. And they were ultimately suggesting, if I can go back, no added formaldehyde resin. So you're trying to get a better idea of the construction components in your property and not calling back to the EIR, but trying to see what your vision is for the project.
Sure. So building materials in general, those that make it to the marketplace are highly regulated by state and federal guidelines. We follow those. Those are in line with the California Building Code. So once we move into building permit process and plan development, as staff has mentioned, we will follow the guidelines currently in place. So the current California Building Code, which is fairly strict and it's a call-out of specific materials, currently identifies certain materials of every sort that are going to be used to build. And if those change between now and when we submit for the, our application for building permit, we will follow those. So we are in line with everyone in the industry is following, which I think was heard here earlier tonight, that this applies to every project in the city and every project in the state. And we're merely following those guidelines, which we believe are heavily vetted out and secure the safety of all users ourselves here in this room right now.
Thank you very much. Next up is Councilmember Mellinger. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Srinivasan.
Oh, thank you. I know, I just saw this. No, this question is for city attorney. Is the, I know he's reading some other thing.
John.
Yeah, I know. Sorry. Very quick question. Do, does the city have any liability if we deny the appeal?
Oops, excuse me. No, what they're challenging is on CEQA. And as the CEQA consultants had talked to and the the staff report addressed, the impact of building materials on the residents is not a matter for CEQA. It's a matter for CARB, I believe, and compliance with the state and federal guidelines that they were just discussing. So as long as they're complying with the building requirements, I don't believe the city would have any liability, assuming we get sued, which is always a possibility on the CEQA matter. The applicant is obligated to indemnify us. And so that means they will bear all the cost of the litigation, and we would work in conjunction with their attorneys to defend against any CEQA lawsuit that was filed. And I believe we would prevail, right?
Okay, thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. I will now move on to the public. I have no in-person speaker cards on this item. Oh, sorry. Yes. City clerk, are there any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, first up is Martin P., followed by Matthew E. Martin, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Good evening. Martin Pine, Chair of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission heard this item on October 9, and we voted unanimously to approve the project and make all of the required findings. The project meets the vision requirements associated with the Lawrence Station Plan. It preserves existing trees, includes unbundled parking, has low in commute proximity to transit. But I think what we're really here to talk tonight is about the CEQA findings. And the Planning Commission was able to exercise its independent judgment and analysis and find that it's consistent with the LSAP, it's consistent with the environmental parameters analyzed in the program SEIR for the reasons, for the reasons that were contained in your staff report, that I don't think you need me to go into too much further detail on that. But the Planning Commission was able to make all the CEQA findings, as well as the SDP findings and the tentative map findings. Now, speaking solely on my own behalf and not on behalf of the commission as a whole, I would say that I would encourage the project to hire skilled and trained local construction workers. Union labor is great. It would have giving, giving high-paying jobs to local workers is great, and it is something that the project should, the project and the applicant should absolutely do. So I just wanted to put that on the record personally. But again, that is outside the scope of the Planning Commission's decision. The Planning Commission's decision was to make all of the findings and approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for the mayor. Oh, sorry. I would ask that we freeze hands at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next up is Mark E., sorry, Matthew E., followed by Mark S. Matthew, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Awesome. Thank you, and good evening. I just wanted to say, Matthew Estepona, with the Associated Building Contractors of Northern California Chapter. We represent building contractors in the trades, and we are also training and developing the workforce in Santa Clara County. And just wanted to voice our input to ensure that any new development remains open, free and fair open competition for bidding. Our members have done a lot of great work in Santa Clara County, building government buildings, but also private development. And in particular, we, members would like to see this project to also be free of any type of regulations or any type of prevention from them being able to bid. And we firmly believe that competition should be the best for the community. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is Mark S. Mark, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the city council. Mark, you should see a pop-up on your screen asking you to unmute. Mark S., we're going to give you one more opportunity. You should see a pop-up on your screen asking you to unmute. Mayor, that was the final remote public speaker that raised their hand by the cutoff period, and they don't appear to be present.
Okay, thank you. I will bring it back. The, let's see, one second. Okay, the applicant now has five minutes to address city council. Present any additional information? Is there anything the applicant wants to say?
We thank you again for your time. We really look forward to delivering this much-needed project, this much-needed housing. Any other questions do come up where we are here. But we greatly appreciate the process, the engagement of staff in the city, and look forward to continuing our future, our past in the city, and to our end of the future here. So thanks again.
Thank you very much. And the appellants will now have five minutes to address counsel.
Thank you, Mayor, and honorable council members. I'll be brief in my closing comments. The last point I would like to make is that regardless of following local, state, and federal rules and regulations with regard to formaldehyde emissions, there is still a potential significant indoor air quality and human health risk impact here from indoor emissions of formaldehyde that requires full CEQA review, which would require either an initial, well, would require an initial study followed by either an MND or an EIR. Again, only use of composite wood products made with no added formaldehyde resins can fully ensure that the cancer risk of 10 per million is met. Thank you so much, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. I see no questions from counsel at this point. With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to counsel. Councilmember Mellinger.
Move alternative one.
Councilmember Melton?
Second.
To your motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief. First of all, I can make the findings. This project is consistent with the Lawrence Station area plan. As Mr. Schroeder so elegantly pointed out, the grounds of this appeal would apply to virtually every construction project in the city. I find it difficult to believe that that falls within the intention of CEQA. Beyond that, I will say that this is a good project. It will help to further build out this new neighborhood, building on the projects that we approved last week at Sonora Court. It will help to also make the mid-pen housing projects that are coming down the pipe for this neighborhood a success. It will help to build a vibrant community in the Lawrence Station area plan and in the eastern portion of District Five, which I represent. I'm extremely enthusiastic about this project. I think it's a great project. I am excited to see it move forward. I would like to echo Mr. Pine's comments in his personal capacity and encourage the project applicants to utilize a skilled and trained workforce. I think union labor is great. It contributes tremendously to our city and our community. And with that, I will be urging my colleagues' eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Melton?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be supporting the motion. Alternative one has two distinct pieces to it. There's the front half that talks about the CEQA piece, and there's the back half that talks about the project. Project is awesome. The Planning Commission is awesome. Planning Commission did a great job. The back half of the motion is affirm the Planning Commission's decision to approve the SDP and this tentative parcel map with the recommended findings. I can make all of the findings in Attachment Three and the recommended conditions of approval in Attachment Four to the report. And I'm fine with all of that for the reasons that my colleague, Councilmember Mellinger, eloquently stated. I'm going to take the liberty of just reading into the record the front half of the motion, because I think it's important. You never know who's going to be watching the video here or when they'll be watching it. The front half of the motion, verbatim, says, "deny the appeal and affirm the Planning Commission's decision to approve the CEQA determination that the project is consistent with the 2016 Lawrence Station Area Plan EIR and the 2021 Lawrence Station Area Plan Update Intuitive Surgical Corporate Campus Project Subsequent EIR, and no environmental review is required pursuant to CEQA Section 15162 and 15168C2." And things that lead me to the conclusion that that's the correct course of action are outlined in Attachment 14, which is a four-page document from our consultants at Ascent, which I think is a very good and helpful summary analyzing appellate's case and providing a response there, too. Some of the sections of this letter that I found particularly compelling on page one, disagreement amongst experts is not a sufficient reason to require an environmental document to be updated and recirculated pursuant to state CEQA guideline Section 15151. That's a fact. The city is properly allowed to reject the opinions and beliefs of commentators, experts, and instead rely on its experts and their expert opinions and analysis regarding the project and its environmental impacts. That's a fact, and that's what we're doing here. I find myself next on page three of consultants' memo that point out to some of the weaknesses in appellate's experts' argument. I'll just read a couple of the sentences here. Says, "In addition, the 2020 study cited by appellate's expert required participants to keep their windows closed for the duration of the study one week and rely solely on mechanical ventilation. In reality, residents would open their windows and use their patios for hours at a time during spring, summer, and fall. This ventilation would greatly reduce formaldehyde concentrations in indoor air, and thus the studies do not accurately capture real-world scenarios." It goes on to say, "The consultant's expert also asserts that it is foreseeable that residential occupants will have continuous exposure, e.g. 24 hours per day, 52 weeks per year. However, this is an unrealistic assumption as most individuals leave their homes to run errands, visit family, friends, and acquaintances, take vacations, travel to work, among many other reasons. Therefore, the assertion that future residents will likely be exposed to truly continual levels of off-gassed formaldehyde is not a true or realistic condition." I agree with that. Second, appellate's consultant, expert, claimed that the project result would result in significant impacts is based on speculation and associated assumptions regarding project construction and materials, regarding the health risk modeling of formaldehyde, regarding how much ventilation there would be in a project, residential units, and regarding application of a significant threshold that is not formaldehyde-specific. I agree with that. We get to the final pieces here, where our expert assures counsel, "A project would only need to evaluate the environment's impact on a project if the project itself would exacerbate an existing adverse condition." The checklist found that there would be no new substantial information indicating that an impact would be more severe than discussed in the LSAP EIR and the LSAP Update EIR, and that the conclusions of the LSAP EIR and the LSAP Project Update EIR regarding air quality impacts would remain valid. So that was a couple of sentences from our expert, all of which I agree with and lead me to the clear conclusion that the appropriate course of action is to deny the appeal and affirm the Planning Commission's decision to approve the CEQA determination. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next is Councilmember Srinivasan.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be supporting the motion that is denying the appeal. First of all, it's a very good project. As I see, there are, apart from the housing stock, there are 44 affordable housing will be built, of which eight are very low-income, which is what we require in the city. And then more importantly, from what I understand, the material used confirmed to the state and federal standards. So city cannot impose additional controls or regulations on these materials. So I don't see any issue, and then based on the recommendation or advice of our city attorney, I don't see any issue with the appeal at all. I would also urge, as Councilmember Mellinger said, the project, if I would also urge, as councilmember Mellinger said, the project, if the applicant can use the union local workers, that would help the economy. For all these reasons, first of all, it's a great project. Thank you very much. Thanks for bringing it to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Next is councilmember Sal.
I think this project is good because it's transit oriented development, and transit oriented development helps more affordability so people don't necessarily have to drive a car to live and work. It appears that both the city and the developer has done a lot of research and a lot of thought and followed the law, and our city attorney supports this going forward. So given all that, I would support this. And then, as my colleagues had mentioned, I do also support union workers who are well trained, and they can keep a project on schedule and with high workmanship. So I hope you might consider that, too.
Thank you, council member. And I'll be supporting this motion. I first want to thank the applicants, and I appreciate what the appellant is asking for here, you know, trying to look at the overall safety of the residents of this project. But I do, you know, think that the applicant is looking out for the future residents as much as possible here. You know, I do encourage them to choose, you know, low formaldehyde selection of all their materials, you know, and, and as, you know, our planning commissioner said, you know, doing local hire is always, you know, preferable, especially from a city standpoint. And I just want to thank the planning commission for seeing this project. And, you know, we often don't have a chance to see a lot of projects that are falling within the zoning of our city, and that's one of the reasons, you know, we depend upon our planning commissioners quite a bit. But I do think that this is a good project overall, looking at how the Lawrence Station plan is actually slowly being integrated and implemented, I think is, is a positive, you know, positive thing for the city in order to add more housing and ultimately look at, you know, that vision, that long term vision that we created for Lawrence Station. You know, I do understand, and, you know, from a city standpoint, I appreciate, as councilmember Melton said, attachment 14, you know, that, that's what I focused on, specifically looking at, you know, the experts and, you know, the reason for what our environmental documents are for. You know, if, as staff said previously, if, if we approved this appeal, conceivably every project that we, that we would encounter would again open up the, the multiple specific plans that we have around the city. And it's like, and whether or not, looking at the internal emissions for every project to me is not what the call for CEQA really is, you know, ultimately looking at, you know, trying to figure out the off gassing of all wood. And I, you know, I can point to multiple projects that have been approved, you know, over the last 10 years that, that, you know, this is why we rely upon the federal and state governments to set, set the appropriate standards. And if the appellant is, you know, thinks that these laws should be raised higher, I definitely encourage them to, to talk to our, you know, state legislator on what is a meaning, what are meaningful thresholds for, for, you know, off gassing of formaldehyde and what makes sense from a residential standpoint and an office standpoint. But as far as the information that we have here, you know, we rely upon the expertise of our city attorney and the experts that they bring in to evaluate, you know, each project. And, you know, we heard both from the applicant and the appellant here in weighing the, the matter and weighing the expert opinions. For me, you know, that, that I fell on the side of what the city attorney and, and staff is suggesting, and so will be supporting this motion. And with that, city clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
First up, councilmember Melton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Mellinger.
Yes.
Councilmember Srini Vasan.
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Sal.
Yes.
The motion carries five zero with councilmember Sisneros recused and Vice Mayor Dean absent.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take a five minute recess, six minute recess, and come back at 10:30. Thank you. Councilmember Reports on Activities from Intergovernmental Committee Assignments. Are there any? So I mentioned this earlier tonight, but it was one of the things that after, after we didn't get to IGRs or non agenda items for several meetings last month, it slipped my mind that in October I was made chair of the Recycling and Waste Commission for the county. And ultimately, and it's like I've been part of that commission for a few years now, and, and it's good to see, you know, our, one of our old staffers who's very active in that from a state standpoint, as well as that commission standpoint, and happy to chair that and, you know, looking at how we can reduce waste from a countywide standpoint. I see no other, oh, councilmember Mellinger.
Wait, we are not yet, we're not yet on.
IGRs.
I'm sorry. Never mind.
Okay. We will now move to non agenda items and comments. Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would like to propose a study issue. David, could we get the text of that on the screen, please? Okay. So I would like to, and could we scroll down just a bit? I would like to propose as a study issue, a reveal, a review of our building and planning appeals fees. In August 2023, we heard an appeal of a proposed condo project on Crescent that had been approved by planning commission in May. That appeal cost $290 to file, and the developer stated that it led to them carrying an additional $150,000 in costs. We heard another appeal this evening, which Mr. Schroeder stated cost between $250 and $275, and again, was denied on the merits. It is important that stakeholders be able to appeal land use decision. Sometimes it is the project applicant filing the appeal. Sometimes it is neighbors. Sometimes it is other interested stakeholders. Appeals can cover a wide range of issues. At the same time, such appeals impose costs on the city and can also impose substantial costs on developers. Economic development and supporting our business community is an important priority for the city. And this is especially important, in my opinion, given reexamining these, these fees is especially important, given recent state efforts to remove local barriers to housing construction, especially on objectively compliant projects. So, oh, could you give the full? There we go. Oh, no, no, down, down. Just show the bullet points. Perfect. Yes. So streamlining appeal hearing timelines, requiring potential app, appellants to meet with staff before filing an appeal. Increasing appeals fees to discourage frivolous appeals and better cover staff costs. We could require one or two council members to approve an appeal before it could be heard by council. We could grant staff to, the authority to deny appeals that they find would likely violate state law. We could hear other proposals suggested by staff, council, and community stakeholders. As part of this study issue, staff would be asked to seek input from neighborhood associations and local civil society organizations and hold study sessions with the planning commission and council.
Thank you. Are there cosponsors? Councilmember Sisneros? And actually, we, go ahead. You can do a short comment if you want, or cosponsoring. Councilmember Sisneros?
I'm just going to say cosponsor. No comments.
Councilmember Sal.
A cosponsor. We have a housing crisis, so it's good to study items like this.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton?
Yeah, I have a question for the city attorney. It's not any concern of mine what sort of consultancy you provided the maker of the motion or the author of the study issue, but, you know, I can only speak candidly, city attorney. Some of these items have sort of alarm bells going off in my head, and, you know, the thought of one or two council members having preemptive right to deny an appeal or in you know, the thought of one or two council members having preemptive right to deny an appeal or influence. Let me just state my piece, Councilmember Mellinger. I believe I have the floor. I, I'm just expressing, I'm not going to cosponsor the study issue and I'm seeing some real jurisprudence type things and I'm not trying to short circuit anything. It already has a cosponsor. So it's gonna move forward. I'm just wondering if you had a chance to consult with Councilmember Mellinger? You have any thoughts about any of the things I'm expressing?
Um, no, we didn't have a chance to consult with him and it would be difficult to answer all the questions, but that's what the, the study issue process would flesh out for the council.
I just want to be perfectly here. I'm not here to pick a fight. I'm not here to derail anything. I respect the process. Study issue has been made. It's been cosponsored twice, so there's nothing I can do to alter the course of where this is going. I'm just expressing, I'm seeing some alarm bells here and I felt like I wanted to say that out loud, so thank you for hearing me out. I appreciate it.
Through the mayor, I'd like to correct the record on one point. This would be requiring council at one or two council members to approve an appeal before it could be heard. Not authorizing one or two council members to deny one. So this was deliberately intended to parallel the process for calling up an item from the planning commission. I would be happy to strike that bullet point if it would make my colleagues more comfortable with this study issue.
I would, I, I would be happier not to see that.
Let's strike it. Let's strike that one.
City, oh, through the mayor. Can city clerk, can you redisplay the bullet points, please? I appreciate the maker of the motion with his flexibility. And maybe if we could slow things down here a little bit. I think there was one more. Granting staff the authority to deny appeals that they would find likely violate state law. I just want to say out loud, since my microphone is on, I totally get the spirit of where this bullet point is coming from, right? If likely violates state law, the thing's gonna be dead on arrival. But I'm not sure how comfortable I am granting staff and authority. You know, if the planning commission says do something or don't do something, the next step in the process is city council, not staff. And that's kind of got some alarm bells going. I'm, I'm not saying to strike it. I should probably just turn off my microphone since, you know, things are going in a, in a, on a course here, they're on a track. But again, I just appreciate the opportunity to turn on my microphone and express some thoughts. Thank you.
I actually, on reflection, think it would be better off without that. I've, I'm gonna strike, ask that that be struck as well. You know, I prefer more, you know, I'm thinking about this. I think that that broadens the scope of the study issue over much. And I'm happy to drop those two bullet points.
Thank you.
And I thank councilmember Melton for his comments on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Shini Bosun?
Yeah, after those two bullet items, the two council member appealing, approving the appeal was the question I had. But anyway, now I cosponsor this study issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Cisneros?
Yeah, thank you. And, and I suppose I will just say a really quick comment on why I decided to jump in and cosponsor it. And certainly not because I looked at that list and said, yes, I wish that this would all become city policy tomorrow and that is what I want to sign off on, right? I, I looked at that and I was like, yeah, I think there could very well be some legal you know, complications around some of those things. But there are many cities who have different guardrails, maybe more extensive and appeals process that's different, that avoids frivolity while also making room for free expression and giving public the opportunity to readdress those grievances to us. And finding that middle ground is what the study issue is about. And I think that is a worthwhile conversation to have. But I can't imagine that our city attorney, our city manager or ourselves would allow us to go ahead and do that. And certainly our residents would not allow us to go ahead and overstep in that way. But I think having, and I appreciated the part of the study issue that really called out doing that outreach to civil society, doing that outreach to neighborhood associations and making sure that there's a robust stakeholder process, because that's what this would need, because this is about stakeholders fundamentally. So because that was in there, I was like, okay, I feel confident and it's a conversation worth having and perhaps we will do nothing. But it's a conversation worth having. That's why I cosponsored it. But I just wanted to say, it's not as if I didn't share those concerns or trepidations, but them taking out or leaving in, it's all fine, because at the end of the day, if something's just patently like, that's not gonna work, like staff's not gonna spend a ton of time on it. So, thanks.
Thank you. And I will cosponsor this. I had issues with those pull-up, pull-up points and wasn't going to cosponsor. Having staff decide that, that they, that the appeal wouldn't go through is exactly why we have appeal. So, you know, it's, it's, it's making sure that, that people feel heard. And of course, having council members being a different threshold, you know, as far from a process standpoint, doesn't make sense. I will raise questions with the fee cost. We don't want to make, I want to make sure that this isn't based upon only those rich developers or rich or, or, or well-funded labor unions decide that they will, that they're the only ones who can appeal. And making sure that that barrier to raise often reasonable issues isn't too high. And, and, you know, from a fee standpoint, I leave that up to staff. But I do think that, that, you know, a reasonable fee, and I understand it creates staff time and it slows down projects, has value. So, but I will cosponsor from, from a study issue standpoint. Makes sense. Anything else? Councilmember Mellinger?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so study issue process is generally a fairly loose process, but one thing that is clear is that there is a study issue stated and then there, if there's a cosponsor, it's, becomes a study issue. We've never had one in the time I've been here in which we had a cosponsor and then the parameters of the study issue changed. So I think it would probably be a good practice to follow Sturgis and treat it as a friendly amendment. And to see whether or not the two council members who had cosponsored it with the original terms would still continue to cosponsor it with the deleted terms, just to make sure that everybody's expectations are the same. And when the staff brings forth the study issue, we don't, we, we don't have misunderstandings.
Much, much appreciated. So we're fine as far as this process tonight is concerned, but you're saying for future note, make these friendly amendments, or do you want to formalize this study issue now?
I, I, I think if, because you cosponsored it after and council member Sal and Cisneros cosponsored it as proposed. So if they're okay with dropping it, then I, I think that would be sufficient. If they have issues, then I think we're, under our rules, we would be stuck with the full parameters. And of course, the issues that were discussed could be raised by the city manager or staff about presenting the issue to council.
Absolutely. And before we leave you, John, at our study, at our study workshop, we could, study issue workshop, we could conceivably change the parameters at that point also.
That is, that is happening.
The write-up, so, and we have done, changed, you know, either scope or remove items in order to reduce, you know, reduce cost or something of that nature, time, cost or time.
Yes, that could happen, but that would mean that the original motion would stay and the council as a body could change it later. That, that could happen.
Okay.
So that, that's why I, I suggested maybe see if anyone changed their mind.
Thank you. So councilmember Cisneros, are you fine with the, the removal of those two bullet items?
Yeah, I give a thumbs up, but I realize that that's not parliamentary procedure, so yes.
Thank you. And councilmember Sal?
Yeah, I support those amendments.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, city attorney. Next up. I think that's. Is councilmember Melton?
So thank you, city attorney, for that discussion. I really appreciate it. Before the meeting got off the launchpad tonight, I know the city clerk was working very hard to get through some technology issues. And one thing I whispered to Mayor Klein is that one of my IGRs, city attorney at Santa Clara LAFCO, we have a whole paragraph that talks about technology problems. And I would just encourage Mayor Klein or you or whoever, right? If, if it's okay to insert a paragraph that says, hey, we're gonna do our best, but if the technology conks out, we're still going to proceed. I think that could be a beneficial thing for the city of Sunnyvale. Just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
I, I think, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I think rather than reading something and like in a statement, it, it would be good to have one of the council policies tweaked to talk about the way we did with the television and whether, I, I think it would make it clearer. I think, as I said earlier, we're not, we weren't obligated to have hybrid when we have technology problems unless it's a remote participation under the Brown Act, but we could articulate it for sure, either in a script or at some point, I think it would be good to memorialize it in a policy, but we could do it in the script.
I, I would say beyond that, it's, it would be part of the agenda as opposed to, as opposed to policy. Because when people are looking at the agenda and trying to connect up and you know, it's like, oh, they wouldn't think of looking at city policy or, or council policy. So, you know, I think that's, you know, a word or two in the script or in the, in the actual agenda makes a lot more sense.
I'll carry, I'll carry on if I may. Yeah, if, if, John, if you wanted to pull up tomorrow's LAFCO agenda from the website, it's just a paragraph that's bolted right into the agenda. It says that the technology conks out, we're plowing ahead and you know, we're sorry, but we're gonna keep going. Hey, and I wish I had had a chance to toss some kudos to our Public Works Director, Chip Taylor, when he was visiting here earlier tonight, but I didn't want to let the moment pass without acknowledging, we got one of our study issues that was launched like back in 2019 or 2020 across the finish line, and that was the E-roof project. So congratulations to the Public Works Department and the entire city of Sunnyvale. For folks who are familiar or not familiar with the concept of an E-roof, it's a symbolic enclosure that surrounds a Jewish community and allows folks observing the Sabbath to carry things such as house keys, tissues, medication, or babies with them and use strollers and canes, all of which are otherwise forbidden during the Sabbath from being carried outside one's home. So my recollection was councilmember Hendricks, who originally brought up the study issue and it passed through our normal process. Maybe took a couple of years to get across the finish line and what happens is you find a connecting pieces of road or streams or trails or sound walls. And if there are any gaps, then our folks in Public Works string from some fishing wire to finish the symbolic enclosure and you string it from high point A to high point B. Anyway, I saw in the city manager's report a couple of issues ago that that was put across the finish line and just felt like I wanted to say kudos to Public Works for getting that done. And another example of the Sunnyvale Way embodied in the study issue process and getting things done. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember Melton. And thanks to city staff for that, but it was, I think, the, what's taken so long. Staff, staff was finished up this, I think, two years ago now, three years ago. And it's taken a lot of work in the back, trying to get all the other jurisdictions to agree with what city, what, with the city of Sunnyvale was able to do and, and approved quite a long time ago. Next up is councilmember Cisneros.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And in light of my absence from our last council meeting, I just wanted to briefly take this opportunity tonight to join my colleagues in providing just a brief statement regarding the groundswell of discussion and discourse regarding the ongoing suffering after the Hamas attack on Israel on October 7th. Especially as being one of the four council members who signed Assemblymember Lowe's open letter expressing concern and support for the children of Gaza in these unspeakably dark times. I also have had the opportunity to speak with many members of our community who are deeply affected by both the attacks on, on October 7th and the terror that now transcends borders and has found a home in this city and in all cities. In these conversations, if I have had one big takeaway, it's that there is very little interest in hearing me attempt to analyze foreign policy. And I will honor the requests that I not do that, especially tonight. Gratefully, it's not my job to do that. And, and every day I'm thinking more and more, wow, I'm really glad that that's not my job, because it's incredibly hard and complicated to navigate waters that are so filled with history and trauma, especially, and immediate hurt. This isn't just in the past, it's in the present and it's in the future. And it's something that, you know, I think I'd really like to work on a garbage contract. But as a, as a council member, when things transcend borders and it becomes an issue of public safety, both real and the feeling that you have when you're in your identity, in your home, in your school, in your community, then that becomes something that's part of my job to be there and hear members of the community and what they're going through and figure out, how can I help? Because at the end of the day, that's my job, is to help people have a good experience in the world they live in out there today. So that, I just want to clarify. I'm not gonna analyze public foreign policy. Nobody wants it and I don't want to either. So we're in agreement. But it's my job to consider the safety of those in the community. So that's what I will seek to do now. So I want to say unequivocally and get it out there that I condemn the terrorist attacks carried out by Hamas against Israel, full stop. There is nothing in this world that could possibly justify or rationalize this kind of reprehensible violence in that instance, in any other instance, against anyone, anywhere. It's never something that can be acceptable to anyone in this world. And I condemn antisemitism and threats of violence against Jewish people, both here in Sunnyvale, in the United States and anywhere in the world at all times. I condemn the words and actions of those who wish to instill fear and harm in the community, in the Jewish community here in Sunnyvale at all times. And I am very grateful, especially to my Jewish neighbors who have reached out and shared these deep feelings of pain and, and really personal stories of how this is affecting them, because that's trust. I was entrusted to hear these moment, these very dark moments. And for that, I'm very grateful. It has, it's been very difficult, but that, what I'm experiencing is just one piece of what people are experiencing because of their identities in our community every day. And I take that very seriously. And it, in a lot of ways, it's a gift to be able to experience connection with the people around you in that, in that way. But it's also really hard, because when, at the end of the day, when you're an elected official, you're also a person who has values and opinions and feelings. But when you're an elected official, you're also a public figure. So that also means everyone gets to help, like criticize you in public for it, right? But that's okay. And I accept that wholeheartedly. And so, you know, I signed the assembly members' letter because I grieve most deeply for the children who are literally caught in the crossfire of any war. And they're in the crossfire not because of any identity or religion or ideology, but just because of an accident of birth. That could have been you, could have been me. It's just the way it happened. And peace has been stolen from them and in many cases, so have their lives. And so I felt that letter reflected the grief and the empathy, just as a mom and as a person, that, that I feel with anyone who's experiencing that kind of loss of, of children, just anywhere in the world. And so I'm incredibly fortunate to not know what that feels like for myself. And so I just wanted to affirm that that is not something that I'm okay with happening in this world. But the intention of signing that statement, I've not personally posted about social media, engaged in any significant discussion about that on a personal capacity, but signing that, the impact was that there were people who felt really uncomfortable or hurt, or that, you know, does this mean that Alyssa you know, feels less for Israeli children? I'm just here to say like that, that's not true. And that same grief and like deep place of just human connection and empathy and, you know, just incomprehensible disgust for what's happening, I feel that for Israeli children too. And those hostages need to be freed. And ultimately, everyone needs to have an opportunity to grow up in a peaceful world. And that has been taken from so many people and I do not wish to be ever part of that. And in Sunnyvale, to the extent that I can help make people feel safe, I am here to do that. And I invite you to please come and tell me how I can help you feel safe. Unfortunately, I cannot, you know, go ahead and stop anything or have a measurable impact on what's happening there. But to the extent I can have a measurable impact on what's happening in your life in Sunnyvale. But to the extent I can have a measurable impact on what's happening in your life in Sunnyvale, please don't be afraid to reach out. So, thank you for hearing that. And hopefully, this is something that we are able to grow in greater empathy and connection from in a very dark time. But that's all we can really hope for. So, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember Sal?
So, can I comment on the two residents who came and spoke about the statement of unity and peace? In the face of fear, both of them, Islamophobia, antisemitism, that they took a constructive approach and they developed that statement, which talks about coming together, freedom of religion, unity and peace, opposing antisemitism, opposing Islamophobia. So I was just wondering if we as a council could do anything with that statement?
Thank you. I see no other comments from council. So we will move back to, oh, sorry, city attorney, city manager. Do you have any non-agenda items or comments?
One brief announcement, Mayor. I just wanted to give you a brief update. Tremendous progress continues on the Civic Center project, doing the site work around City Hall. Today was a huge milestone. We took down the fences on Olive Avenue that separate City Hall from several acres of passive open space, and those are now open for public use. So, exciting to see that happen. And there's a lot of progress as well on the south side of City Hall as that work continues. That's it.
Thank you. Congratulations. We'll now move back to remote oral communications. I'll ask people that if you want to speak, please raise your hand now and we will freeze the numbers of speakers with their hands raised at the end of the first speaker. And with that, city clerk, can you call on our remote speakers for oral communications?
Yes, Mayor. First up is Rudy H., followed by June A. Rudy, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Fantastic. My name is Rudy Hess. Thank you so much for taking my call. And I would like to say that I am in complete disagreement with the last council member who missed the last meeting. Israel itself is a terrorist state and has been since 1947, when it took over the homes of everyone that used to live in that region, what was known as Palestine. Israel was not even a word on the map in the Encyclopedia Britannica pre-1956. So they went and they stole this land, they kicked the indigenous population out of this land, and they started killing, raping, and maiming every man, woman, child, and goat they could get their.
And you, can you go to sub jurisdiction of, of this council?
Yeah, fuck niggers.
Thank you. Thank you, city clerk.
That was perfect.
Next up?
Mayor, Mayor Klein is a, as a point of border. I'm just looking at the freeze point.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Next up is Rudy H., followed by?
Which is Rudy H. was?
Sorry, yes, sorry. Next up is June A., followed by someone calling in with a phone number ending in 117. June, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address city council. June, you should see a pop-up on your screen asking you to unmute. Okay, it looks like June is attempting to connect to audio. So why don't we go to the next speaker and then come back to June? Next up, member of the public calling in with a phone number ending in 117, followed by Ursula. The member, the person calling in with the phone number ending in 117, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the city council. The individual calling in with the phone number ending in 117, please dial star six to unmute your phone and you'll be able to address city council. Mayor, they don't appear to be responding to being unmuted, so we will move on to Ursula, followed by, we'll check in with June. Ursula, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Fantastic. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Um, my goodness, I had a whole thought prepared and then listening to some of the, the comments, I'd, I'd actually like to talk on something separately. Um, I actually wanted to thank the city attorney for protecting free speech. I understand there are limits. I, I get it. And I do appreciate him pointing out the difference between hate speech and, and simply speaking on a topic that you may not like. I mean, time and time again, Supreme, Supreme Court justices have ruled in favor of free speech, even while talking about quote-unquote hate speech. Oliver Wendell, actually, during State versus Swimmer, he stated, if there was any principle of the Constitution that more imperatively calls for attachment than any other, is a principle of free thought. Not free thought for those who agree with us, but freedom for the thought that we hate. I find this interesting, because recently I've been reading, actually, about the rise in antisemitism, specifically at, um, kind of bombarding city councils. So I was flabbergasted to actually go into my local city council and witness it. But when, when I was growing up, I always heard that it was ignorance that spread hatred, that those words only came out of the ill-informed. And one of the speakers today actually mentioned a website. I, I think it was like GTVflyers.com. I actually looked it up earlier when they originally spoke. And I'm sorry. Um, you know, when I was in college, I, I majored in psychology and I actually volunteered at this counseling group and we did a, a group session specifically for anger management. And most of the people that get anger management court mandated and go to these groups are there for some sort of hate crime. And we found, on the psychological standpoint, the best way to combat hate is actually to have an open dialogue. So I understand you having to shut people down when they use slurs or, or profanity. However, I think the best way to combat all of this hatred is really just to have an open dialogue. I mean, if, if information on the site is false, then the best thing we can do is just prove it. And then, and then the conversation ends instead of shutting people down. Because once someone doesn't feel heard, they react in vulgar ways or maybe even actually take some sort of action, which I find is a very dangerous thing for any government body to do. When it comes right down to it, we do live in America, we do have rights, and it feels rather communist to censor people. But I wanted to thank you for letting me speak. You guys have a phenomenal night.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna return to June. June, you should see a pop-up on your screen asking you to unmute. It looks like June is still experiencing technical difficulties trying to connect to audio. That is the last remote public oral communication speaker.
Okay. Thank you, city clerk. Thank you, city attorney, for your help tonight. This meeting is adjourned at 11:00.